Good evening. Thank you. In honor of the 18th anniversary of 9/11, I would like to introduce Ben Silvermans, Director of Vocal Music at Central High School and the Parkway Central Standard Time Vocal Jazz Ensemble, to perform the National Anthem.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's first gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous spires? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the free And the home of the brave? Home of the brave?
We're going to ask them to sing us one more song, so now please enjoy "Hold On To The Rock."
(Singing) You've got to hold on to the rock of ages, Hold on to the cornerstone. Stand strong on the short foundations, Surrounded by a fortress strong, When all the storms of life are raging. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on to the rock. You know that it doesn't take One mighty earthquake to shake The ground, you gotta hold on. Cause life can change like a hurricane Can blow all the planes. Well, the ground is gonna shake And the wind is gonna blow. Tell me who you're gonna trust? And where you're gonna go? You gotta hold on. Hold on to the cornerstone. Stand strong on the short foundations, Surrounded by a fortress strong, When all the storms of life are raging. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on to the rock. You know sometimes when life is easy, It's so easy. It's when you gotta hold on. So be grateful for all that's good. And everybody's seen. Hold on, you gotta hold on. When life shakes us to our very soul. Who you're gonna trust? And where you're gonna go? You gotta hold on to the rock of ages. Hold on to the cornerstone. Stand strong on the short foundations, Surrounded by a fortress strong, When all the storms of life are raging. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on to the rock. You've got to hold on to the rock. You've got to hold on to the rock. Hold on to the rock.
Thank you all very, very much. Thanks again to Ben Silvermans and the Central High Jazz Ensemble. Let's give him another round of applause.
Mr. Todd, if I could just, I just want to, on the anniversary of 9/11, this is the 18th year, I just want to thank anyone who certainly served our country, and I want to just note that Ben has, is a veteran, as are Paul Tandy and a number of people, I'm sure, in our audience, and on this day, I think it's important to remember those people that have responded to 9/11, and Ben, thank you so much for your service, and others, and thank you for bringing this wonderful group to us today.
And I'll also add that we genuinely appreciate the kids being here, though I know they've already left the building. But we had the Steppers, the Parkway Step Team, a year or two ago, join us, and it's always nice to see some kids in action here in the building for board meetings, and this being Arts and Education Week, especially a nice treat to have them join us, so thank you again. Let's see, we are on to our Agenda 6.0, already additions, corrections, and modifications to Agenda, we have the following. 6.01, correction to Item 10.13, approval of family arena license agreements for May 2020 high school graduations. 6.02, addendum to Agenda Item 10.06, approval of personnel items. Next, we have citizens' statements, and let me refresh my screen here, I believe we have... Come on, technology. It says working. It still says working. We have two. Yeah, I'm gonna need the names. Rebecca Jansky? We have Rebecca Jansky is our first speaker, and let me read you our official little statement. We do provide an opportunity each meeting for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open dialogue with our community. Due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting, so you will receive a response from us in writing. We are also always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings, and can be reached by email or phone using our contact information on the Parkway website. So thank you for being here, come forward to the podium, and you will have two minutes.
Board of Directors, Superintendent Marty and Administrators. My name is Becky Jansky. For the past 27 years, I've been a resident of Parkway School District. My two children and one of our foreign exchange students graduated from Parkway West High School. I'm here with my friends representing WECAN, which is the West County Community Action Network. Our school team is ASSIST, which is an abbreviation for a solid stay-in-school team. The ASSIST team takes its mandate to reduce racial disparities in suspensions from the Forward Through Ferguson report as part of the Ferguson Commission. A newly released report found an alarming gap in school discipline in the St. Louis area schools. The Brown School of Social Work at Washington University found a disproportionate risk of out-of-school suspensions at the intersection of race, sex, and disability. In Parkway, two of the risk ratios are nearly 20. A child with certain identities is nearly 20 times more likely to receive an out-of-school than a child with different identities. To put it another way, the risk of a black boy with disabilities is receiving a suspension in Parkway schools compared to a white girl without disabilities is greater than a risk of a man who smokes a pack of cigarettes every day for 30 years getting lung cancer compared to a non-smoker. I would like to request three things from the Board and the Administration. First, read the report, including the data and the potential solutions. Second, compute your statistics for 2016-17 and 2017-18. Tell us if Parkway trends better or worse. Third, eliminate out-of-school suspensions in Parkway's elementary schools. Suspensions are especially damaging for our youngest students. Last year, the Kirkwood School District ended suspensions in their elementary schools. We believe that Parkway can do that as well. The West County Community Action Network remains committed to working with Parkway to reduce racial disparities in suspensions. We will work to understand this problem in an intersectional way and support the district as it works to close the discipline gaps through intentional policy and systems changes. We've seen successes in Parkway's and other districts using techniques named in this report, such as restorative practices, trauma-informed care, and social-emotional learning. The report notes that these solutions do reduce overall suspensions, but the disparities may persist. Finally, we want to see Parkway change the culture of the district to prize equity, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Amanda. Next, we have Amanda Michael. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Good.
You're the first.
Good guess.
Hi, thank you for having me. I want to second what you said, I was very moved by that. I also want to emphasize that I think a big reason for that is the lack of diversity of the staff in Parkway. My son, a white boy, said to me, there's no black teachers at all in Parkway West Middle. I said, no, I think that's not right, I think there are some, and he said, no, I'm pretty sure there aren't, and this year, he said, oh, I have one now, so maybe there is one. And I know for a fact that my daughter, Claymont, has zero black teachers at her school. But the main thing I wanted to talk about before her moving speech was security at the elementary schools. What I would like is for, instead of having three doors, like an unlocked door and then a locked door with a buzzer, and then a unlocked door that just stays open, where the people have to buzz in, and then if they come up with some compelling reason, they get to go to the office and show their ID, and then they get told they can go to the rest of the school if that's what they need. Instead of that, I would like for it to be, you have to actually show your ID before you have access to the school. So right now, like at Claymont, you show your ID, then you get access to the office, but if you really wanted to, you could just run into the rest of the school, there's an open library, there's open hallways. They would sound an alarm, but what if there were just kids running around in the hallways or in the library, or what if the teacher wasn't quick enough to lock in the door? Or if I wanted to, you know, put this bluntly, what I would do as a gunman, I would go to the unlocked door, I'd go through, I would hit the buzzer, I would come up with some compelling reason to get through, I'd go into the office, I would shoot the office staff, and then I would go to the rest of the school without the alert being sounded. So if you had to see the ID before you could go into the school, I think that would be better. One argument people have brought up in response to me is like, well, if someone was going to do harm to the school, they probably could get in anyway through being a parent, through being a spouse of a teacher, so then that wouldn't handle that situation. And to that, I would say, well, you can't control that situation at all, but you can control the situation, you could just lock that door and then only unlock it when the ID is scanned and the person is vetted. I did speak to Paul Tandy about this, and he did agree with me that perhaps they could lock the door until the ID was properly scanned and the person was vetted, but they weren't sure if there was any kind of holdup with that, so I'd like to emphasize that we should have that, not just at Claymont, but at all the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, may I have a motion and a second to approve the Agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for September 11, 2019?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next, regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 25, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. Parkway's annual tax rate hearing will take place at 6:30 PM this same evening. Next, we have Board Liaison Reports. We'll start down at the end with Matt.
All right, I'm usually positive with these, I'm gonna be a little frustrated tonight, and I'll say, I want to basically address an issue that's a national issue that's affecting Parkway, and I think Parkway's doing a great job addressing it, but we're not getting the help we need. And the fact that this summer, Parkway lost both a current student and a graduate to gun violence. Ian Coleman, who was at Parkway North High School, and then Raymond Griggs, Giggs, with a graduate of Parkway Central High School from 2015. And as you're well aware, we've had a lot of violence here in St. Louis this past summer, and this summer too, I attended one of the intruder trainings with Jeff, with the staff. It was uncomfortable, disturbing, and frustrating for the fact that we're spending teachers' time, school resources, on these kind of trainings. And then the fact that with our bond issue, we're spending resources on having to secure the schools, the schools stepping up to do these things, but again, it's a national issue, we're, at the local level, are working hard, trying to address it. And then at the local level too, we are working with mental health, social wellness efforts, and we're still getting no help from above. And it's been even more accentuated of late, I'll say last week, St. Louis Public Schools had a special board meeting, and I'll say Debbie and Pam and I attended it, it was three hours of citizen statements. People are hurting, and people want to help too, and we've got to find a way through this. And with Parkway right now, I applaud them for all they're doing, but one thing that's difficult now is I'm gonna try to attend one of the intruder trainings at the school when the students are there. My daughter's already said, her anxiety spikes that day. It just frustrates me to no end that at the local level, we're trying our best to address these national issues, and we're not getting the support at the state or the federal level. And it is not a single solution to fix it, we're not gonna do it overnight, it's gonna take time, it'll take a lot of resources, but we need help from above. So my call tonight, I hate being so negative, it's just the fact that reach out to your legislator and ask them to do something, because right now, it's about priorities. Parkway does prioritize safety of our students here, and we are working in multiple ways to give our kids a safe place to school, but right now, we're getting no help from the state level or the federal level to keep our kids safe, whether it be at school or at home. So I implore you to reach out, because it's gonna take more than one thing to address the issue, have them do something, we need some help here. Sorry about that, Pam.
Well, I'd just like to second the importance of advocacy as parents, as citizens, advocate for the things that we need to keep our kids safe, both in school and out of school. I'm in total agreement with that. I did a lot of listening at that meeting last week at St. Louis Public Schools, and people, our community, and I consider the city of St. Louis part of our community, is traumatized, and people need to advocate for legislation that, including more support for schools, to provide the things that schools do supply. I'll move on to the rest of my report. Last month, during the first week of school tour that Dr. Marty and Mr. Todd do of all the schools in the district, they hit every single one of them, I went for one day, and I, with them, visited eight schools in the north area, and I intentionally chose an area that I do not live in because I wanted to get into more schools that I had never been into. And I was inspired by the enthusiastic students, teachers, and administrators I met in those schools. I was also struck by how different those schools are from the schools that my students, my children attend. The schools are so diverse, in language, in race, in ethnic background, and it really gave me a wake-up call. I know that I ran on the best Parkway for all, and I always keep that word "all" in mind, and being in those schools reinforced that for me. I think one thing about Parkway is that Parkway is constantly reviewing their practices. You're gonna see two examples of that tonight, in two targeted evaluations that we're going to be doing, one around middle school reading and one around our diversity programs. And I am proud to be part of a district that is constantly looking at how they can improve. We've responded to some hard things in this first month of school, some things we were able to make immediate changes, some of them, the changes can't be immediate, but we're always looking to improve, and I'm proud to be part of that.
I just want to say I totally support Matt, what you said, and the encouragement to get support beyond what we're trying to do. We're trying to do so much in Parkway, it's so evident that we take it seriously to have safety and security for our students and our teachers and our families, but we do need help beyond, and I'm not sure how to get it, but somewhere along the way, it has to happen. I just want to say that Project Parkway Steering Committee is going to be meeting in a week or so. I started out, when I came to Parkway, as a volunteer, I started out 11 years ago, in Project Parkway Steering Committee, and I'm really excited about it, I'm really proud of it, and I think we should all be proud of it, because so many initiatives have taken place through Project Parkway and the strategic planning process that has taken place over the years. There's a long list of accomplishments, and they're all recognizable, they're all happening in Parkway, so I'm really, really enamored by the fact that it's continuing. Usually, Project Parkway initiatives, such as strategic planning, usually kind of dies on the vine after a year or two, but it's been sustained over all these years, and we should be very proud of that, we should be very supportive of it, and I'm excited about it this year, and I think there's gonna be a change in when we meet, which is fine, but the mission will go on in terms of what we need to accomplish.
Not to belabor the point, but just to echo everyone's comments, our region's traumatized. I know Dr. AJ always shares a greeting, and it translates into, how are the children? Is a way of knowing how a community's doing, and the children are not okay. Our kids are not okay right now, and it's all of our responsibility in the region to fix that. So echoing, just echoing what you all say. On a totally different note, I had the chance to see the Stanley Cup when it visited Barrett's Elementary School, which those kids were really excited that day. So it was just a really cool experience. So one of the trainers for the Blues' child goes to Barrett's Elementary, where my child goes, and they, when he had his day with the cup, it was a surprise visit to the school, and all the kids got to see it, and it was just, they didn't know what was coming, and seeing the kids' reaction when like the actual Stanley Cup like came out was, it was pretty cool. Kevin was there too, so that was just, it was a nice moment to be part of.
Well, I'm kind of at a loss in that I don't think I can speak as eloquently as some of my colleagues, and Chrissy kind of stole my thunder on the Stanley Cup situation. But I will say, since last we were here, I also took part in some of those first day, first week of school tours, and those are always really, really great to see kids excited about their school and teachers and administrators, everybody's excited about the new year and happy to be there. And I'll also say, I went to some PTO meetings, the Craig School one I have to go to because my wife's the president, but yesterday, I was along with Dr. Marty at the PTO meeting at Northeast Middle School. We were asked to be there, to talk to a lot of the parents who had concerns over some things that had transpired at that school, that touched on some of the things that our colleagues had talked about, and I thought Dr. Marty and Dr. Martin did a really good job. You know, it's a tough situation because a lot of these parents, they want, they want to know certain pieces of information that the district really is not in a position to be able to tell them. But we also need to make, help these parents to see the things that this district is doing, and you know, as Matt said, we don't necessarily get some of the help from above, but you know, Parkway has taken on itself to address this issue, and it's kind of a three-pronged approach, yes, you know, we've diverted bond money to make our buildings safer, we've invested and committed ourselves to the social and behavioral, emotional health of our students. And then something that Dr. Martin said yesterday that really stuck with me is, you know, sort of coupling those things, is helping to create schools where they really are a community. And yes, we can do everything we can to keep outside forces out and to keep kids safe, but if you create an environment where students look out for one another and care about one another, you know, that's kind of the best, that's kind of what we can do here, you know, we can only control the things that we can control, and you know, I think that's a big part of the Parkway's mission and something that I'm really proud to be a part of.
I'm gonna start with my other items, and I'll address, as my colleagues have, on the violence issue. First of all, I want to let everybody know, I met with Dr. Keenan, Liz Keenan is the new Special School District Superintendent, in my role as the Governing Council Chairperson. We are preparing our next meeting, which is next Monday, September 16, at 7:00 PM. And we are also starting to work on advertising for three Board of Education seats that will be open at the Special School District level, which the Governing Council, that's their primary responsibility, is to vote on the Board of Education for the Special School District. The three seats that will be open, the first one represents Hazelwood and Jennings. The second position supports Melville, Bayless, Afton, and Hancock School Districts. And then the third seat open will cover Rockwood and Ladue. So we put out that advertisement now, because in the past, we have had difficulties finding and recruiting qualified individuals to serve on the Special School District Board of Education, and we want to start getting this information out sooner than later and starting this process earlier than what has typically been done in the past. So if you know of anyone that works in those areas or has students in those districts, please perhaps send word. They can also go to ssdmo.com, their website for the Special School District, and information will eventually be on there. It's not on there yet, but it will be. And those elections take place in March, and they start taking applications a couple of months before that. I am very pleased with, so far very optimistic about the new superintendent for the Special School District. I think that, from what we can tell, she presented at the Parkway PAC meeting, which is the Parent Advisory Committee for Children with Disabilities, and along with Dr. Keenan, she was at that meeting, Dr. Marty, Dr. Matheson, and Bobby Fleming, who is the Director of Special Education for Parkway. So it was a very wonderful time to get together with some new administrators here to, along with the SSD Superintendent. So if there are parents in our district that do have children with disabilities, I would strongly encourage you to attend some of these meetings, they are very, a parent support group primarily, and you learn a lot of information, everybody can kind of give their experiences in what to do and give advice, and it's very beneficial for parents to attend those meetings. They meet the second Tuesday of every month at 7:00 PM at South Middle School. The other item to report on is that I attended a PTO Leadership Expo, which was very important to our school district. to our, our school district. We have so many of our PTOs are crucial with fundraising and helping to support our schools in raising money. And so it was a wonderful event to have that. I had never attended that before, and it was phenomenal to see all the different leaderships that we have within the PTOs in our, in our, in our district here. And then, moving on, I also attended a principal coffee at West High, where the issue of vaping has been broached. And a new creative method of dealing with vaping in our schools is that any student that is found and caught vaping is going to have to go through a program that is, I think nationally known, where the students have to go through an educational program. And there are online activities, there are reports that they have to go through, there are tests that they have to take, they have to meet certain answers to all these tests, and if they don't do well enough, then they have to repeat some of the elements. It's, it's a way to educate the students. We're all hearing a lot about this now in, in the media as well. And so I'm, I was very pleased to hear that instead of just doing a detention and not addressing the real issue here, we're going to actually start educating our, our students better with, with this approach. And then finally, on the matter of attending the St. Louis Public School Board of Education Special Meeting, I think we're all just very passionate about this issue, and how can you not be? This school district, Parkway, it rolls students that live in the city through our VIC, which is our volunteer, it is a voluntary inter-district choice corporation, as well as VST, which is a voluntary student transfer. So we have students that are living among that violence coming to our schools, and this just has no barriers any longer. We, we cannot continue to say that this is a city problem and not a county problem. These are our friends, these are my children's friends, we go to their homes, they come to our homes. This, this knows no barriers any longer. And so I found the event to be highly educational, it was very inspiring. The word that I heard from some of the gentlemen that were sitting behind me during the course of the evening was that we are worn out. They need help. And so the St. Louis Public School System has put out a call to any other school districts to help, to collaborate. And so I have asked that we talk about that, and how can Parkway collaborate with the St. Louis Public School System to, to help support their efforts and the community's efforts in what they're doing. I even, on a personal level, met with James Clark of Better Family Life to say, "What can I do to help?" And you know, we, nobody can sit in here any longer and say, "It's somebody else's problem." It's, as Christie said, "It's all of our problems." And it breaks my heart when my children's friends are going back home every night, you know, to the city, and it is just, we, we need to step up to the plate. I do want to thank Dr. Marty for your call to action on the social media matters. I think is very relevant and timely. I do want to point out that Parkway has a tip line, and it is on, you can reach it on the mobile app or by calling. There's also a phone number you can call, 314-415-SAFE, which is 7233. Anytime anybody has any concerns about safety, security issues, anytime of day, please write into our call that phone number to provide information on any concerns or issues that we might, that there might be, so that they can be acted upon in a timely manner. I think that wraps up my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I echo a lot of what has been said, and I won't, I'll try not to repeat a lot of it, but the report back from, from those of you that attended the meeting at St. Louis Public Schools last week was eye-opening and thought-provoking as to how we can, how we can help. And there are other districts, as was pointed out, other districts in the state are helping St. Louis Public Schools try and figure out how to, how to improve, and we should be among those. I'll also reiterate the, the great time that many of us had at school visits, the first week of school. The recurring theme that we kept hearing was that school was off to a great start, that students were, were happy, that teachers were happy with, with classes and with class sizes, and, and things were going smoothly. We obviously, we did have some, some challenges after that first week, which hopefully I feel that we, we arose to those challenges as well as we could have, given the information and, and resources that we have. Again, Dr. Marty's message was, was very well thought out and timely, and I think that, that hopefully it will encourage parents to engage with their kids about making smart decisions whenever possible. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate the reminder of tomorrow night, there's a, there's a meeting, which Jason Rooks will be one of the presenters at, where is it, South Middle?
South High.
South High, tomorrow evening, about how to be safe online. And it'd really encourage parents to be there, to learn what, what so many parents seem to either have their heads in the sand or just don't realize how dangerous online can be to our students. Also want to mention, I had a great time with some of the families at Highcroft. They had a Hot Dogs with Highcroft event the week after school started, and it was just an opportunity to get together with students from, from their entire, their entire student body, not just where, where a lot of schools sometimes just have an event at school or in the backyard of the school, basically. They, they held this at Forest Park because it was a median distance for a lot of their, their students that live both in the county and the city. And so it was great to have a, a great group of people that, that came from different directions to spend a Saturday afternoon together, just enjoying the outdoors. We had a good communications advisory meeting a couple of weeks ago that we have several times a year. Debbie attended that with me, and we have a lot of professionals in St. Louis that lend their time, they volunteer, they're in the communication field and the industry, and they, they help us shape the, the messages that we, that we share with you often. So I want to thank those folks for continuing that. As Matt mentioned, the Safe Schools, or I'm sorry, the Intruder Drill Training that we, we both attended, it is sobering. That was my first time going through it with, with other employees, and I too, like Matt, am interested to see how the kids get to experience it from their perspective, and look forward to that opportunity as well. Last note, I want to mention that two days ago, I think I finished my Safe Schools training, which all Parkway employees, we ask, or we require that you complete that. So thank you if you've gotten that completed. I think it was due maybe this week.
Due this week.
And so, but it, I did it, a couple of years ago, I did it last year, and I know some of my fellow board members have, have completed some or all of it. And, and I think it's just a great, it's a great way for us as board members to understand what we're asking of employees, and I think it gives us a better perspective of, of how the policies that we help shape and create, how they affect our employees. And, and I hope that whether it's, it's our employees or the public, I hope that if they have concerns or questions or ideas or suggestions about how those policies can be shaped to make the work-life better for our employees, I hope they feel welcome to share those opinions and those perspectives with us going forward. So that's about all I've got.
I would just, you know, I'm a superintendent, but as a citizen, I just want to thank the board. I'm just sitting here thinking, well, what passion you have and what commitment you have in your role. You're thinking not just about Parkway, but about the region. And you know, many years ago, this board, not all of you were on the board at the time, maybe Sam will recall this, this board told me at a meeting when Normandy was unaccredited that we need to step up and help Normandy. It was the board that told me, Dr. Marty, do that, and we did. And I think your call for us to assist the St. Louis is a worthy one, and I think we have to consider it. So consider that, certainly some, we're going to talk a little bit more about how we can be more than just a voice, but what, what can we really do to make a difference? But thank you. As a superintendent, citizen, your comments were inspiring and I think really important. I do want to just mention two, two compliments. Over the weekend was Navy Week and the airshow at, at Spirit of St. Louis, and we had a couple of people that spent probably their, they could almost slept out there this weekend, they spent so much time. So I'd like to really recognize our STEM coordinators, and I, I think, I don't, yeah, there are only two here. And then Kevin Becker was there, I think, all day Saturday, so he needed, he deserves to be recognized. So Jennifer Profit, Stephanie Valley, Jennifer High School, Stephanie Middle School. Kevin, you were there all day, you deserve a little recognition. And then Jen A., our elementary STEM. They just put a lot of time in, and so, so much good feedback that I received. They were there all Friday because we had students out there, and then all day, and they were just busy all the time. So thank you for your commitment to Parkway and all the extra work you put in. I think they deserve a round of applause. And then I just want to say, when we've had some of the issues we've had to deal with, I just want to compliment, I wish they were all here, but Paul is here from our Communication Department, and quite honestly, a lot of the work that sometimes results in my messages, honestly, comes from the work of Paul and his staff. So our communication people have been working overtime too, so I think they deserve a round of applause for their work here as well. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, 9.04 upcoming subcommittee meetings. Next year's subcommittee meetings, or this year's subcommittee meetings are currently being scheduled, and we will provide those dates very soon. Next, we have 38 items on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the September 11th, 2019 Board Meeting Materials?
So good.
Second?
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. We have no action items, we have no policy review tonight, we have no official reports. However, we do have two work sessions, first being the Middle School Reading Intervention Targeted Evaluation. So I would like to, like to welcome Dr. Kevin Beckner, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, President Todd, by President Hopper, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. And as Ms. Hill mentioned earlier, we are constantly trying to evaluate our work and make sure that we are being as effective as possible for our students. And tonight, you will have two of those, with the Middle School Reading Targeted Evaluation being the more narrow and focused of those two, and as such, probably our length will be shorter during this time as well. So the Middle School Reading Program serves multiple hundreds of students across our Parkway Middle Schools between 6th and 8th grade, and this work began last school year when our middle school principals identified that over the past several years, we've had some inconsistencies developed between each of our schools and how the program was being implemented. This included differences in the actual programs being provided to students, the way students were being scheduled, the different methods by which the program was being delivered, some schools using a push-in model, some using a pull-out model, differences in how students were being scheduled. And they said, "Could we really take a look at this?" So we gathered all of the middle, middle school reading specialists and began the process of identifying what areas we'd like to target in this evaluation. I'm proud to say that all of the areas you'll see tonight were developed by our reading intervention specialists, as they identified themselves, that there are areas that we need to study, look into, and shore up, so that we can ensure that our students who are struggling with reading in middle school get the best possible services that we can provide. So through this targeted evaluation, the topics that the group identified were student identification. This means ensuring that we know the criteria by which we identify students, that we can be consistent in that criteria, both as students enter Parkway, potentially from other school districts or from out of state, or how they transition from elementary school into middle school, and ensuring that we're identifying the students who need that support. Secondly, we want to study the resources, structures, and scheduling. This includes the types of programming offered, how we deliver that programming, the type of model we use, as well as how that model is scheduled in the day. Everything down to, what does a student's schedule look like, and are they pulled out of class? If so, what class? Are we pushing into classes? And all types of questions related to that. Thirdly, we really want to look at the connection to the core content area, meaning two-way communication. How can we ensure that the reading specialists are providing valuable information for our classroom teachers, as they're also supporting students in their reading throughout the core content areas? But also, what information can the reading specialists gain from the core classroom teachers that might help them better support students? And we also want to look at how we monitor student progress. How do we know if students are making the appropriate amount of gains that we would like to make? How do we know that the program is being effective? What are the data sources we're using to ensure that students are, in fact, making the kinds of growth that we want them to make in middle school reading? To do that, we need to collect a bunch of information and do quite a bit of research around these topics. So this includes recent performance data. How are students actually performing? What are the outcomes that we're seeing from students who, who participate in the reading intervention program? What's our current reality across our schools? How exactly are students being scheduled? How are we identifying those students? What are the outcomes that we're getting from the various programs that are being used in our schools? Really do a thorough analysis of what we're currently doing. We really want to look closely at those transition procedures, and that means both the transition from elementary school to middle school, but also the transition into and out of the reading intervention program. We want to make sure that as students move, say, from a reading intervention class back into a gen ed classroom, that that transition is smooth, that the teacher knows the kinds of supports that student was receiving in the reading intervention program, so that they can build on that transition. We want to do a deep dive into what research is available on the effectiveness of middle school reading intervention programs. Middle school readers present a unique challenge because often we know that early intervention is the best type of intervention we can do. We want to get students reading and reading at a high level when they are early in their school careers, but for many middle school students, those challenges have persisted often for years, and sometimes they develop coping mechanisms to hide some of the things that are causing their reading difficulty, or maybe they're coming in from a school where they didn't have a strong reading experience. So there could be multiple reasons, but we want to make sure we know what's, what are the most effective things out there for middle school readers who need additional support. We want to audit how we collect data and how we communicate around that. An example might be as a student enters Parkway, if we do any assessment with them as they come in, we need to make sure that the reading specialists get that information and get it in a timely fashion. So we want to analyze our process around how we collect that data and communicate that. We also want to look outside of our district, look at our area colleagues, what types of middle school reading programs are being used, and particularly being used in ways that might be highly effective. We want to identify what those are. And we also want to talk with our core area teachers to see how we can better support students as they are in regular gen ed classes, and how we can make sure that the reading specialist is involved fully in supporting those students as they're working with the reading specialist. So we intend for this work to be completed this semester and hope to have a memo back to the board on our findings and recommendations by January, and at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
What kind of, what kind of group, what kind of size, consistency of teacher makeup do you plan to use for this study?
For this study, we'll use all the middle school reading specialists will be involved in that particular group. Unlike some of our other evaluations where we involve a lot of community stakeholders, we do intend to reach out to specialists in this area outside of our district, but we're not likely to get the kind of input on the topics we were looking for, say, from parent groups and things like that, but we'll be using all of the middle school reading specialists. Our principals at each of our schools have been involved already up to this point. Our middle school coordinator of ELA Social Studies Reading Intervention, Dr. Jaeger, will be involved in that. And then we also would like, if we can figure out how to get some student input around, particularly their schedule. We know a challenge with all students who struggle is they want to be in those elective classes. Like they want to have all the choices that every other student has. We also want them to be in their regular English Language Arts classes, but at some point, something has to give to ensure that they get the support that they need. What's the best way that we do that? So that will be one area where we, where we do try to reach out to students and figure out their perspective, because we want to honor that as well. We know we've had a lot of talk tonight even about the social, emotional well-being of our students, and that that's a, a key factor that we have to keep paying attention to, so we want to get their input on that as well.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do you have intentions to survey the parents about this? I didn't see them on the list. And it would seem that the parents getting their input on what their experiences are with accessing help for their students could be beneficial to the district.
Yeah, that's a good, we'll add that as one of the things that we can certainly look at, how we might do that. We know that this is often a group, it's a small group relative to, say, a whole school or every student who's participated. Last year, we had slightly over 200 students get direct reading services in our middle school. But that's certainly something we can look at, is how do we get parent input from those families?
That would be, that'd be great. Thank you. And then also, will you be looking at staffing? And staffing, whatever the new model is and what your current staffing levels are?
Yeah, always a factor when we look at how we implement a model, is do we have the staff to implement this effectively? We certainly know our reality in Parkway, that we're not in a position that we're adding staff currently, but we know we have to certainly consider that and make sure that whatever we come up with is really going to serve all of our student need. So, while it won't be a direct question, do we have the staff? As we look at, what's the type of model that's best for students and their, and their reading growth? What's the best schedule to do that? Then we'll have to look at, okay, if that's the best model, what are the staffing implications of that? And then we'll have to address that at that time.
And the other question that I have is, have you decided yet how you're going to monitor the progress of the students? I just happened to come across last year's MCIP report and saw that, according to that data, ELA scores have actually dropped every year for the last several years within Parkway. And so, I was, I'm concerned about that. And now, it did not delineate between what all the different grade levels are for this, it was, you know, a comprehensive collective report. So, it was all students. And so, I think it would be interesting how that monitoring is going to take place.
For sure. Specific to the reading intervention program in middle school, one of the first things we found was we were not collecting similar data across all five schools, which makes it obviously really difficult to say, how effective is our current program working, when we might have different programs being implemented in each school? Not to get too technical, but we have multiple measures, like we have the Fanta's and Pennell Assessment that generates grade level. We use a lettering system in that, in that model. And we also have the SRI Lexiles, and we've been using both of those. Some in some schools, some in other schools, and some schools both. So, we want to get consistent around that, and we've actually already implemented that for this school year. Our middle school reading intervention specialists will be giving a full Fanta's and Pennell Assessment at the beginning and end of the year for students. And then at every six-week grading period, they'll be entering what we call their running records into Infinite Campus, so that we can better look at the growth over time and track that. That's something that we discuss with them at the end of the school year over the summer, and we're able to put in place for this year, so we can start getting that consistent information.
Thank you. And then the other question that I have is, I recently learned that, and I don't know if this is going to be related to this topic or not, but we'll see, that parents whose children come into the district are told they have to wait one year before they can receive testing for learning disabilities. And so, I see this reading intervention as part of that process of our students that are coming from other districts. And so, I'm wondering, is that, is that a good practice really to have? And is that something that could be evaluated here as well as, you know, how are students being evaluated for the reading interventions that they need? And if, and so, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious about.
Sure. I certainly don't want to speak for the special education process, since that's not my expertise. But I will tell you that we can't wait a year to intervene for students.
Right.
So, just speaking for Parkway, certainly, when we see a student even who is brand-new to our school, you know, and maybe they've been here a week, we're going to evaluate what that student's need, need is, and we're going to put interventions into place for that student. There's no arbitrary time limit on students who need help. Like, we have to help them as soon as they, as soon as they get here.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kevin. Look forward to your report.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to welcome Parkway's Diversity Initiative Targeted Program Evaluation Discussion with Charlotte EJ, Director of Pupil Personnel and Diversity.
Want water? Cough drop? Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Todd, and also Vice President Hopper, all of the directors on the board, Dr. Marty, and also Mrs. Stover. She's my favorite. Sorry to say that.
She's our favorite.
So, I just wanted to do, the report is, I'm going to speed it up. When Kevin finished, I was like, oh my God, I'm going to be up here forever, but I'm trying not to. So, this is the targeted program review for the diversity and equity. It will be done this year in 2019 and '20. So, I don't, oh, I do have this on. This is Parkway, everybody. This is Parkway. These are our kids, this is what our kids look like. They really aren't our kids, but this is what, who they look like. They represent, these students represent our students in Parkway. This is also Parkway. We have students who are living with disabilities, different religions, our LGBTQ students, what quarter in, where it says "help," those are our students who are dealing with mental health issues. Also, class, this class and all of that in terms of socioeconomic class. And also, the last one is how our children learn differently. Areas of concentration of this review of the evaluation will be representation of all students in the curriculum. How do we get that done? How do we hire more diverse staff? Discipline disparity, the culture, climate in Parkway to engage all students. So, to ensure all students can see themselves represented in the curriculum, students of color are often hearing American, American history they have learned at home, different from what they are learning in school. The unit of slavery, or the enslavement of African people, brings about shame in our African-American students in particular. It is told from a deficit model, enslaved people are seen as happy, simple, docile, and as victims. In the black community, students hear about the struggle and the fight to be free, that we stand on the shoulders of these strong kings and queens stolen from their homeland. The curriculum coordinators, especially Dr. Susan Erby-Hawkinson, Erin Crowley, and Courtney Jaeger, did an amazing job studying the true history of enslavery and in terms of how will they rewrite the curriculum in social studies. And I'm just blown away when they presented. They just didn't have a lot of time to present, but they could have presented for two hours and it would have been absolutely amazing. So, I thank them for that. So, they're going to be working in that area. They're getting historical information to give an awareness of more than the victimization narratives, but to talk about enslaved Africans, to create a counter-narrative. So, we do have, the other one is, we do have, there is a, there's a reality check for us in terms of hiring. And a part of the process of hiring has to do with the fact that we are just not, we're working on it. HR has been working on it, but it just hasn't manifested itself in the way that we want it to just yet. But we are working on that. So, we want to hire a more diverse staff. And one of the things that we know is that Project Parkway is one of the goal two initiatives. So, as long as it's there, we will be working on that. This goal has been met, although some attempts have been made, and we are really proud of the HR department for what they have done. All students will benefit from a more diverse population of teachers and administrators. Students of color see people in authority who look like them. It would also provide a counter-narrative to students of European descent. It provides administrators and teachers of color a support system. To accomplish this goal, those who hire must understand their own racial bias in order to recognize their own unconscious and conscious biases that may make them say things like, she's just not the right fit, I don't think he or she would be able to get along with our parent population or our community. So, we hear that a lot. We also have a disparity in our discipline, and Greg Wagner has been working in that category. He's the coordinator of discipline, and he's also presented the discipline today, looking at the disparity. It is a huge disparity. African-American students are more likely to be referred to the office, suspended from school for disrespect, classroom disruption, and insubordination. Four years ago, 30% of our Parkway students who live in the city of St. Louis who were referred to, well, referred to for SSD testing, and they also qualified. That was high. We have brought that number down in Parkway to 19%. And that's with the help of all of those who are working very hard as equity representatives in those meetings, asking questions like, what do you mean? And how do you know that? And tell me more. Let me skip through these. The racist incident targeting administrators, teachers, and students in Parkway. We don't have to reiterate that, but I do need to say some of the things that kids are feeling, as I work with students every day in groups and things of that sort. Everyday microaggressions, who am I? Students are feeling, who do, who do you think I am? Messages are received through social media, classrooms, those in power, our state, local, and national governments. It is just as difficult for adults of color as it is for students. Some white teachers and administrators have a difficult time understanding the hurt. Oppression takes a physical and emotional toll on teachers and administrators of color. Students of color become withdrawn, they do not feel heard, and also are misunderstood. Students and adults will sometimes distance themselves from their own racial identity. The last racial incident targeting African-American students caused them to look outward at the pervasiveness of racism they feel in Parkway. Interestingly, their reaction to the racial incident by white students caused them to look at the Parkway institution and the oppressive systems in place. They sought change in those areas and insisted on school, school change agents. Some of the things that they did, and they did protests and they made some demands. One of the things was hiring teachers and administrators of color. Discipline disparity, look at that. They want us to have more opportunities for placement in higher-level classes for students of color, or African-American students in particular. They want to be heard. They want to be respected by adults. To see themselves represented in the curriculum and contributions of people who look like them in all subject areas. Administrators and teachers be aware of their own racist comments and the racist comments of some white students. Have an appropriate discipline for such behavior. Relationships with their teachers and administrators, they want that. They want to be able to feel as if they belong, that should be, belong. And also, they want equity for all, because they have friends who are in every category. In 2019, why are we, why are there still inequities in Parkway? Well, I know for myself, and I can speak for myself and myself only, I do have some conscious and unconscious biases, and I have to work on those. We all have bias. We were socialized differently. We all were socialized differently. We receive misinformation, missing history, biased history, stereotypes about people we did not know. This information was reinforced by institutions such as Parkway, our educational system, places of worship, government, communities, and people who we knew, we knew, who loved, and we loved them, and we trusted them. We internalize this information and still believe it today, some of us. So, how do we meet the needs of our students who have told us what they desperately need? Gary Howard, and this is a book that we give all of our, all of our administrators and teachers that go through social justice. The name of the book is "You Can't Teach What You Don't Know: White Teachers, Multiracial Schools." And he says, "Before my lessons could begin, I first had to break out of a cultural encapsulation and isolation, which entailed much initial shock in following, in those years, followed by continuing waves of seismic dislocation of my former reality. I began to see myself as blacks, Hispanics, and others outside my group saw me, both collectively and personally. I had to face the history of white dominance. I had to conform my own, confront my own ignorance. And I often tripped over my own and others' feet as I felt my way into the choreography of the larger dance." Gary Howard is one of our most talked-about anti-racist activists for education. Teachers and administrators must start with confronting their own bias, unconscious and bias, and conscious bias. Thanks for allowing Parkway, first of all, to bring Dr. Sharaki Holly, a national expert who trains teachers throughout the world. He has trained over 200,000 educators. He says we must be authentic while on this journey of creating equity for all. Check in often on our own authenticity. Is it still there? Go back to the heart, where we find our emotions, our feelings. There are three goals that he sets out in his work. Increase student engagement, so do they feel they belong. Goal two is to deal with inequalities by locking into your pedagogy. And goal three, give outrageous love for all students. Know your own culture. I can't do anything about anyone else's culture if I don't know my own. Know and learn each student's culture, but do not deculturalize students. Know the difference between behaviors that come from the student's home culture. Validate them, but guide them toward the school culture. Once you know it is cultural, you can't be punitive or negative. You redirect, but you don't suspend. And I think that that's a biggie for us. Dr. Howard also says that we need to teach, sorry, Dr. Holly, also says we need to teach situational appropriateness. For instance, if a student does do something or say something that is from the home culture in the classroom, and it doesn't jive with the classroom culture, validate that and say, this is a part of who you are in the classroom, we can't have that. Students always end up saying, okay, thank you, and leave it alone, rather than escalating. Dr. Holly says that our schools must be vab, fabulous. And that means that we have to validate, affirm, build, and bridge in order to get our kids to do what they need to do. So, in social justice, we do something, we talk about the definitions of the head, the hand, and the heart in doing this work. The head work is when we want to go deeper, we go to the head, place first. We learn a lot. We talk about the things that we want to read, and we read those things. That's the head piece. This is not a feeling place, it is a thinking place. Uncover ways in which our inescapable network of mutuality has been damaged, making us all victims of racism. That comes from Dr. Martin Luther King's quote that says, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." The hand piece is where we talk about, what are we going to do? You go out and you do these things for kids, you come in, you want strategies. So, where you are, what, where you are going, and what kind of work you're going to be doing with those students. Using strategies you've learned to help students succeed. However, there are no personal emotional attachments to the students. And when they don't do well, adults are more likely to give us, give up on them. If the student succeeds, I have been successful. So, we know that we have to do the hand work, we know we have to do the head work. But where we want to be is here. This is what's going to fix everything. We have to be at the heart. That's ourselves, yourself, myself. I have to stay at the heart piece. This is a place of personal growth. This is where we do all of our learning, of our work in understanding our biases. It is the emotional place. It's where empathy comes from. The heart allows us to open doors to our feelings. How does it make you feel to see the Bohemians turned away from the United States where they have lost everything? This is not a place of sympathy, it is a place of empathy. We must begin to understand our biases about certain groups if we are to be successful in achieving equity for all, if that is what we're planning on doing. This is just a concentric circle. If you see in the middle, there's the self, and I have that in red. So, if you throw a rock in the pond, and what happens is you get a ripple effect. So, when we start to teach social justice work, and when we start to teach about cultures and things of that sort, it's the self that's learning. And then, when we get comfortable enough, we move out until, and talk to other people, probably close family members and also close friends. When we get even more comfortable, we move out and we do colleagues and adminis- When we get even more comfortable, we move out and we do colleagues and administrators and the community and places of worship. However, we continue to come back to the self, which is the heart. So it means that when I venture out, I have to come back to the heart piece and understand what are my biases? How am I influencing the negativity in the students that I work with? So that's what I need to understand. So we have a timeline and a method, methods of evaluating this program. Meet with the committee, which is comprised of teachers, administrators, coordinators, community members, weekend, parents, and students by September the 30th to continue to work on surveys. Survey, the survey students, surveying students, teachers, administrators, parents, and community members, because we want to know from all of them what they need. Data gathered by the end of the first semester, report to the board in late spring to 2020, and we're going to explore additional work with Dr. Holly to help teachers and administrators understand cultural differences. Push that. Questions?
I'm not sure I have a question, but I do think this is important work. I think the district is fortunate to have you leading this and to have, to be a part of things like this because I think you're asking some tough questions and I think we're all going to benefit from it.
Can I just add to that and say, I hope we're really brave in this. I don't hope, we need to be, we need to be really brave in this. And, you know, just reflecting on the earlier comments, the kids aren't, our children are not okay.
Our children are not well.
And I, I worry that we, in those comments, I hope, I want to make sure we're not doing like this St. Louis City thing and it's those kids in that city because it's not. And it doesn't matter where kids live. These are our kids. These are our communities and they're not okay.
And this is about all kids.
Yes.
Because our, our kids who are of European descent need to know the cultures of others.
Yeah.
And vice versa.
And it's hard work. You know, these are systems and structures that have built up over a long time to benefit some groups and not others.
Absolutely.
And it's, you know, somebody was using the analogy the other day that it's not bad apples in the barrel, it's that the barrel's rotten.
Yeah.
And that's hard.
Right.
And so, you know, figuring out how to dismantle these things can feel like you're airing out your dirty laundry.
Yes.
And I was in conversation with Dr. Kira Banks, I don't know if you know her, it's Lou. And she said, we all wear clothes, we all have dirty laundry. And so kind of the bravery it takes to say, we got some problems.
Yes.
And then doing the hard work of like, how do we address that is what we need to do?
You're right. And you know, we are building momentum in Parkway. I have, we have so, I should say, we have so many white allies that are just going far and beyond where I thought they would ever go. And so, once you get started on this journal, journey, it's hard to just give it up. So I need, I need everyone to be with me, to stand with me. I couldn't do this work, I don't do this work alone in Parkway. I have lots and lots of people. If it weren't for you guys, I know that I wouldn't be standing here. If it weren't for Dr. Marty and the other SAT team members who believe in this work, I couldn't, I wouldn't be doing this work. I mean, I would be doing it, but I might be fired, you know? I should put it like that.
And I do, I want to, and then I'll be done. I want to, you know, come in, Dr. Marty and Dr. Matheson, who's our new assistant superintendent for student services. I said to them about a month ago, I'd really like to connect you with Ford through Ferguson, you know, with David Dwight. And they said, please do.
Okay.
And I sent an email and they, they connected.
Yes.
And so, you know, taking advantage of the resources that are out there, taking advantage of our colleagues that we can, taking advantage, not taking advantage, listening to our students who are brave and said, this is my experience every day.
Yes.
We don't, our kids, those of us sitting up here, all of the Parkers are our kids, but the kids that we parent, don't have those experiences. So we've got to listen.
Absolutely.
And that's it.
And our Parkway students are always leaving Parkway looking for the Mecca that they have in Parkway, the diversity. But it's not there in your colleges. In a lot of colleges, it's just not, it's not like that. And they're still looking for that. And that's why they enjoy, I think that's why our students, all students enjoy being in this extremely diverse fabric in Parkway. My grandsons do, I should say that. Any other question?
Well, thank you for what you've put together so far. And I do see one piece, when you were talking about the four different areas that you're going to be looking at, there was one thing that, that I didn't hear. I know we're aware in Parkway that we have an achievement gap among the subgroups, and that was not mentioned as part of this evaluation. And I just wonder if we can consider looking at that as well, because that's another area where we all know we need to improve.
Right. And that's what we will continue to do. I didn't put it in here because that wasn't mentioned with the students, but we continue to work on that, the achievement gap. And so, yes, you're absolutely right.
So your question, the four key ones are based on the students.
They're based off what the students said that they need it. And they also said they wanted to be in more AP honors classes. So we have the backing of the kids, all of the students.
Yeah.
We really do. And you're absolutely right. So we will continue, Parkway will continue to do that, work on the, in closing the achievement gap. That's a given.
Thank you.
I think I just add to that, Pam, that we are engaged in something called Equal Opportunity Schools, which is really an opportunity gap, you know, getting more students into AP honors classes. And we've got now, Dr. Beckner, this is the third, fourth year, kind of, I guess, where are we at? And so we got some data now to show that we were getting more students with opportunities. That's not the only way to close the achievement gap, but I think, I think Charlotte would agree, I think a lot of times it's opportunities, you know? A lot of times we want to close that achievement gap, but what opportunities are we giving? So certainly the opportunities, and it can't just start at high school. We've got to find ways. And certainly the curriculum piece is that. We've got to make sure that students are getting a rich curriculum. And getting curriculum is also worthy of their, their own cultures, which is part of that.
And that was going to be one of my questions for Equal Opportunity Schools. Will you be evaluating that to see how is that working? Is it working for the students, the way that we had intended for it to work?
That's a fair question.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's valid. And I think that, I know that we will be evaluating it. Prior to Equal Opportunity Schools, that's what DIA was set up for, is to make sure that we push kids from elementary school toward gifted, toward areas where they're, they're not necessarily, maybe reading, two grade levels behind, making sure that they catch up. So it's always been there. And like Dr. Marty said, it's the opportunity gap. And I look at our departments like technology. Technology makes sure that students, there is no excuse for students not to have access to internet. And that's a wonderful, that's a wonderful thing. Parkway's doing great stuff. We just got a lot to do. We've got a lot more to do. So, but I, I just, I can't thank you guys enough for supporting the work and Dr. Marty and all of SAT and what they do.
I have a couple more questions for you. First of all, thank you for this very comprehensive report. Look, I'm sure it took a lot of time, so thank you so much for that. I need some help understanding one of the pieces of information that you provided tonight, which is with regard to referrals to the special school district. And how, it kind of seems like that's in a negative light and that you're trying to drop that. And I need help in understanding why. Why is that a bad thing?
Because again, I go back to.
That they're being referred because that means that they qualify, they get help. So I'm just trying, I need help in understanding.
This is like four or five years ago, there were three OCR, Office of Civil Rights identified, three school districts in St. Louis. Parkway was one, Rockwood was another one, Melville. So five years ago, we came together to work on this problem. It's, it's not that people are doing this because they want to do this. It's because they don't know. So you don't know what you don't know. So when we all came together, what we did was we trained equity reps. Because we looked at, this is not good. It's not a good thing. Every student, 30% of our students who live in the city of St. Louis should not be, should not have an IEP. So that's, right? So we know that. But it's dropped down to 19%, which is a good thing because we put people in those care teams who said, and not only just our three schools, but SSD school district, St. Louis City Public School District. We all worked together to train psychologists who do the, and the people who do the actual testing so that they could look at their own racial bias. So it's about bias. That's the reason why we're going to work hard on understanding our stereotypes, our biases that we might have. Because if someone challenges us, then we can look at it and say, hi, well, maybe this child, we can do something else for this kid. And it's been working. It has been working. So.
Can I, can I just take a risk, take this a little farther?
Yeah.
And correct me, but when you talk about bias, I mean, oftentimes students are referred based on sometimes behaviors, you know, and not really. So we want to certainly meet the needs of students, really have a definite need. But I think we found a lot of the work, and I know Dr. McCarthy was gone now, he was, he was one of our administrators. And a lot of it is, you refer and then students, we talk about equity, students then are put in special education programs that aren't, and they're not getting another kind of curriculum. It was kind of like the, when Dr. Beckner was talking about what are opportunities? So it's really, it's really, it's really a bias issue and it's really one of, is that really the need? You know, is there other kinds of interventions that we have to be dealing with? So sometimes it's just that quick, this student doesn't seem to be doing well based on behavior or some cultural biases.
Absolutely.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
And I think 30% is way too high. I mean, I think we were identified and kind of blown away by that own data, that that's not appropriate.
And Debbie, there's some really good national and local resources, like research on it. I'm happy to share it with everybody.
Well, it sounds like it's a matter of getting the students help earlier so that they don't have to be referred to SSD, right? Is that?
Well, it's not, it's, they may not have, again, it may be our, it's things that we see culturally that, or see behaviorally that really should be handled with an understatement. It's really, maybe simply said, it's kind of an adult issue. You know, the adult is assuming that this because the student doesn't behave or doesn't, you know, farm.
Oh, okay.
And it's kind of at our level. And so it's really, it's an education piece for our adults at all levels. So we have dropped it, as Charlotte said, it's been more attentive, but it's, it's an ongoing concern, I think, that we have.
But even our students who speak, whose first language is not English. We tend to refer them.
Exactly.
Because it takes them longer to take in that information, then turn it over, and then spill it out. So when that happens, then we start to look at, maybe that student needs a little help. So we have to be careful in that area as well. And those kids are being watched. And people are more aware of that so that we don't, we don't make that mistake. So it's a lot, it is a lot of work to be done.
Yeah.
But I know Parkway can do it. If anybody can do it, Parkway can do this.
We can do anything.
Yep.
We can. And Charlotte, I would also like to thank you for your time here tonight and the depth of your presentation. And I can tell you that, that I have, more so than a lot of people, I have the luxury of having a lot of records and I've done a lot of genealogical research in my family and I can trace my family back to 1590 when they came to this country.
Wow.
And I know a lot of people don't have those resources. And as I've spent so much time doing that historical genealogical work, I've thought about how I was raised. I've thought about the stories that I've heard from my parents and grandparents about how they were raised and, and then I think about how my kids were raised. And you made a comment about how you have the backing of students. And you really do. I mean, our, sometimes I don't think we give our students the credit that they deserve.
Yes.
Because as I, as I've been, I was PTO president at West Middle and West High for a number of years, and I see, I see parents interact with other parents differently than I see kids interact with kids.
Right.
And I now have a son who's in college, I have a daughter who's graduated from college, and their, their peer group, their friend group is so much more diverse than when I went through school. And, and I'm sure even many more times so than, than their grandparents and great grandparents. So I would challenge you that through your work, through talking with the students, I would challenge you to empower, work to empower students more to have those bold conversations with their families.
Absolutely.
With, with parents, grandparents. I didn't have that encouragement when I was a kid, and I have vivid memories of grandparents and great grandparents making comments that, that just I should have never had to hear.
Absolutely.
So empower them to, to be more bold in their communication with their own families.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Thank you so much. And I, as I always say, no blame, no shame, no guilt. Some can trace their lineage back. My husbands were Nigerian. I get angry with them because he, you know, he's got, the family tree on his side is 30 generations. And I get upset about that. You know, you got a chance to live in your country and, but that's neither here nor there. You understand what I'm saying.
It is here and there.
Yeah, exactly. We just have to do this work and that's the bottom line. And we're going to make mistakes doing it. We're going to make mistakes.
That's how we learn.
We can do it.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next scheduled closed session will be held on Wednesday, September 25th, 2019, at Parkway Central Middle. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. We, we are not, let's see, are we adjourning the regular meeting? And then we are going to recess back into closed, which we only, only got five ninths of the way through earlier. So right now, may have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
Some of it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries seven.